Good evening and welcome everyone to the St. Anthony Public School Candidate Forum. My name is Grace G. I'm president of the New Brighton Area League, which includes the communities of St. Anthony, Mountain View, Columbia Heights, and St. Anthony. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. That means we neither oppose or support any political party or candidate. Our mission is to encourage informed and active participation in government and to increase the understanding of public policy issues. Tonight's forum is designed to give you the voters an opportunity to hear directly from the candidates, to hear about their priorities, and help you make an informed choice this election. It's now my pleasure to introduce tonight's moderator, Linda McLune, McLune, sorry, a member of the Roseville Area League of Women Voters who will guide us through the forum.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Candidate Forum for the candidates running for school board in St. Anthony, Brighton, Independent School District 282. As she said, I am a member of the Roseville Area League of Women Voters and I live in Roseville. So I will be your moderator for the Meet the Candidates forum tonight, and so on behalf of the League of Women Voters, I'd like to thank you for agreeing to participate in the Candidate Forum. I will say that two of the individuals who are running for the four-year term will not be here tonight, and I will read their opening and closing statements. So you're stuck listening to me quite a lot, so I apologize in advance. I'd also like to remind everybody that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidate, candidates, and not those of the League of Women Voters. And sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement by the League for any candidate. So we received a lot of questions beforehand, and I see I have at least one from the audience, which I will try to get to. And we, but we only use questions that are addressed to all the candidates, and we don't use personal or attacking questions. They're not allowed by league rules. And all of the questions then become property of the League of Women Voters. So we need the questions, the answers to the questions to focus on the questions and the issues and not on individual candidates. So, and I will enforce that rule. So let me introduce the candidates for the seats on the St. Anthony New Brighton School Board, District 282. There are three candidates running for the full three-year, the three candidates running for the four-year term on the school board. They're Annie Bosmans, who is here with us tonight, Laura Haas, and PJ Stryker. There's a special election to fill a two-year term on the board, and there are two candidates running for this single position, and they are both with us this evening, Daniel Turner and Michael Overman. So the agenda will be as follows. All the candidates will have two minutes for their opening statements. I will then ask questions, and using a random-generated method, I have, they'll switch all around. So sometimes you might be last, and then you might be first the next one, just so you're mentally prepared. So there are also two minutes for each of your responses, and I will rotate the order randomly. At the end of the question period, you'll again have two minutes for your closing statements, and I will again read those from the two candidates who are not here. So we have our wonderful timers sitting here in the front, and they will, they have signs that will indicate 30 seconds and 15 seconds and then stop. So I ask you to please finish your sentence, because I hate to, you know, keep saying, please, stop, stop, over and over again. And we do this just to make sure that everybody has equal time. So we are now ready for our opening statements. So we will start with the person who is here who's running for the four-year term, and that is Annie Bosmans.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for those of you who are here tonight, watching, watching from home, and also those who may be watching the recording later on. You care enough about our students and our schools to be a part of this conversation, and I appreciate being in this space with you. My husband and I moved to St. Anthony in the spring of 2020, from 33rd and Benjamin Street in northeast Minneapolis to 33rd and Beldon, four whole blocks. We have four children, Cal, a sixth grader at Sam's, Alma is in fourth grade, and Loretta is in second grade at Wilshire Park, and Pippa has one more year of preschool at Nativity. Over the past five years, our community has become this community, and we're thrilled to be investing in it. I have a degree in early childhood education, with most of my educator role focused on supporting our youngest learners and their caregivers. Over the years, I found myself in spaces where building trust and connection was essential, and that has been the thread that ties my work together. At my core, I have deep respect for those educating our children. I've seen both the incredible dedication and our teach, of our teachers and the challenges that make their work harder than it needs to be. As I've become more engaged over the past several months, along with many community members, we've been asking questions. Why are so many teachers leaving? Why are they feeling unheard and unable to share their concerns? What could we be doing differently? What started as curiosity has grown into a calling to help rebuild the trust necessary for our district to thrive, for our community, for our teachers, staff, and administration, and ultimately our students. I've seen firsthand that when we bring more voices into the conversation, we begin to uncover not only the problems, but also the path forward. I'm running because I believe in the potential of our tiny little district in the city. My priority, priority center on rebuilding trust and transparency, supporting and retaining great leaders, teachers, and centering student learning and well-being. Please know that as I respond to these questions, my preference is for one-on-one dialogue with time to process and to truly hear one another. If I communicate something that doesn't feel clear or doesn't sit well with you, my door is open. Our kids and our teachers and our families deserve that level of care and collaboration, and that's why I'm running, and that's why I'm grateful to be here tonight.
Thank you. So I'll now read the opening statement for Laura Haas, and I will watch the time. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here and for your interest in engaging in your community's future. I'm Laura Haas. I regret that I am unable to be here in person tonight. I'm attending a work conference in Poland with fellow international educators discussing global collaborations and ways to keep our world connected with, through student exchanges. But I wanted to share a few words with you before we begin. I'm running for the St. Anthony New Brighton School, School Board, District 282, because I believe wholeheartedly in the power of public education to strengthen communities and transform lives. My background and values are rooted in education. My father was a public school teacher and superintendent, and my mother served as a teacher, education faculty member, and a school board member in southern Minnesota. Those experiences taught me early on that the strength of our schools comes not just from policies and budgets, but from caring relationships, trust, and listening, especially to those working hard every day in the classrooms and hallways. If elected, my guiding principle will be this: We must listen first. I want to hear from our teachers, our students, our families, and our staff. Their insights, challenges, and vision should shape every decision our board makes. I believe that open, respectful dialogue is not optional, it is essential. I also believe that conflict handled well can lead to growth and innovation. We don't have to agree on everything, and in fact, healthy disagreement often surfaces better ideas and stronger solutions. What matters is that we approach conflict with civility, humility, and a shared devotion to our children's success. My priorities are equity, listening, and mental health. Equitable access means ensuring that every student gets what they need to thrive. Listening means valuing frontline experience in decision-making, and mental health means supporting the whole child in safe, responsive learning environments with the support needed from leadership. Though I am not with you tonight, I'm committed for being a steady voice grounded in community for our schools. I'm grateful for this opportunity for candidates to share with you, and I look forward to carrying your voices into every board discussion. I got it in. Okay, and now I will read the opening statement from PJ Stryker. My name is PJ Stryker, and I'm honored to be running for the St. Anthony New Brighton School Board. I am so sorry to miss tonight. I have been battling a sinus infection, and I am still fairly ill. I'm open to any questions via email and happy to talk in person when I'm feeling better. I grew up in New Brighton, and my husband and I are raising our five kids here. We have had kids in Wilshire Park, Sam's, S-A-V-H-S, and Yinghua. We moved here for the schools and have struggled in feeling disappointed at various times in the last several years. Like so many of you, I care deeply about our schools because they're at the heart of our community, and I'm invested in ensuring our schools are an example for high-quality education and graduating well-rounded students. Professionally, I am a child and adolescent psychiatrist and medical director at Children's Minnesota. I see every day how education, stability, and access to support can change a child's life. I've spent my first year on the board, learning, asking questions, and working to make thoughtful, student-centered decisions. I voted for a balanced budget that protects classroom learning and supported cell phone restrictions in our high school to help students focus and relieve pressure on teachers. My priorities are simple: Make sure that every student leaves our schools ready for success, whether that's college, trade school, or a career. Two, support our teachers and staff with fair pay, resources, and respect. Three, protect what matters most: Student learning, mental health, inclusion, and safety. Four, spending wisely, cutting nonessential costs before asking more of families or staff. I believe in listening, in transparency, and in leading with both compassion and common sense. Together, we can keep our schools strong, inclusive, and focused on what truly matters, helping every child thrive. Thank you. And that's from PJ Stryker. So we are done with our four-year term opening statement, so we will now move to our, our two candidates for the two-year term, and we will start with Michael Overman.
Okay, thank you. My name is Mike Overman. I'm running for reelection to the St. Anthony New Brighton School Board. First off, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Chamber of Commerce for putting this event together. I really appreciate a chance for the candidates to talk about what they want, you know, their point of view, and give you voters a chance to, you know, learn more about each of us. So I want to thank all of you here in attendance tonight. You were all busy, but you've made the time to come out. We've got a full room here, which is wonderful. And to those of you watching at home tonight, if you're on the live stream right now, thank you. And if you're going to watch this over the next month, I really appreciate your involvement and engagement, and that's something that I really value about St. Anthony. I think it's a place that has shown commitment to being involved the entire time I've lived here. I moved here in 2014 with my wife Marnie and our two kids, Maude and Malone. They were three-in-one when we got here. Now Malone is a seventh grader at the middle school, and Maude is a freshman at the high school. And she got to go to her first homecoming dance last weekend, so we took all the pictures ahead of time, and it was a really special night. And even getting a little choked up, sorry. The time's kind of flown by, but it's also, we have this lifetime of memories, and most of those have been centered around the school and around what we've built in this community. I'm a strong believer in public education. I was publicly educated. My mom is a public school teacher, she was, she's retired now. And my kids have gone through the St. Anthony programs every step of the way. They were over there in ECFE, and I was in the room with them, learning how to try to be a better parent. They went across the hall to the community center preschool here, and then they were at Wilshire Park, where I was a classroom volunteer and subbed in the school for a few years while they were there. And now they're at Sam's and Maude's at the high school. And, you know, as cheesy as this sounds, I think public education is vital right now. It's a pillar of our democracy, and we have to have it to have a civil society. There are so many things that we are in front of us that we have to hurdle. And my school board term has been one of the most challenging things I've ever taken on, but I've tried to approach it with humility and great care, because I know how important this school is to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And our second candidate for the two-year term, Daniel Turner, your opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone for being here tonight in the audience and watching online. Thanks to the League and the Chamber for hosting the forum, and I want to thank all the past and present school board members, many of whom are here, for their public service. I'm running in this election because of my belief in public service and in public education. Strong Minnesota public schools are what allowed me, the son of a school custodian, to move on to MIT, earn a PhD, and become a professor at the top, one of the top private universities in the country. My time as a professor has given me expertise in all three of the crucial roles of a school board. In terms of policy, I've sat in curriculum reviews, safety committees, and a whole bunch of other committees to develop different policies. In terms of budget, I have earned over $10 million in federal grant funding to support my research and my students. And that funding is tightly restricted and controlled, much like the funding of a school board. And finally, in terms of leadership accountability, I've served on a number of recruiting and hiring committees in higher education to identify and recruit top students, faculty, and other administrative officials. I'm running in this special election as the result of three key events. The first was that concerning email on April 8th. This motivated me to learn more about what was going on in the schools. Second is hearing about teachers resigning in the middle of the year. As a professor, I know that that's a red flag, that something is amiss. And finally, on the June 3rd school board meeting, when Chair Phillips announced his resignation, he called for someone with a fresh presence and fresh energy, and that motivated me to run. I'm truly impressed with the diversity in this community, and if elected, I promise to give you the best of what I offer as a professor and a scientist, which is an objective evaluation of data and information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're now ready for questions. I will just let everyone know that we received almost 60 questions in advance. And so I took all of those questions, and I put them together into themes, and so I'm going to try to ask everything from the different themes. So if you submitted a question and it sounds sort of like your question, but not like, you know, I did my best to get the essence of it, and these were also sent to the members of the league here, so to look at the way I had organized them. I also received at least one from the audience, so thank you. And I am actually going to start with this one, because why not? Okay? So just, I'm flexible. So, so for the first question, we're going to start with Annie Bosman. What is the, and it's long, there's two parts to it, okay? So what is the most foundational change you'd like to see in the district? And can you give an example of what that would look like at the elementary, middle school, and high school levels? So, Annie Bosmans.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. I think the biggest thing I would like to see right now is that our teachers are happy, and they're staying, and they want to stay. I have seen in my own personal world, and also just in communicating with other, other teachers, former teachers, that they're leaving and they're not happy. And so how do we, how do we get our teachers to want to stay? We are such a vibrant, beautiful community here, and many of our teachers live here, and so I want them to be happy and be, be taken care of. So what does that look like? I think that looks like they're having the support that they need in the classrooms. When they call to the office, somebody comes, they have good structure in place for their, the policies are upheld, and they are followed through, so that whenever there is a need, they are able to reach that. And I think that, that would carry over to all of the, all of the different schools. I would love to see a vibrant community where we, as community members, are coming in and we're supporting our teachers as they need it, so that they can have some of that weight taken off, and then they are able to do the job that they need to do. So how can we, as community members, do that, whether that's meeting basic needs for children, coming in and volunteering, just being a present and a support to them however we can, so that they can really make our students thrive? I think that when teachers are happy, our students are happy, and that's what we really need, to have kids that are thriving and moving forward. And yeah, I would love to see high support and teachers that want to stay and want to come back and are just thriving here in droves, so.
Thank you. Next, Michael Overman.
Okay, the biggest foundational change I would like to see, I want us to be able to say we've closed the gap in our student achievement results. If you look at our test scores and our success metrics, you know, we've tried to come up with ways to analyze our student body, because we have a very diverse population here in St. Anthony, and you can see differences in how students perform, and we want to eliminate that. I don't want to be able to predict any type of outcomes, and I want to see that, you know, you can't tell by race, or by gender, or by anything like that, how kids are doing. They're just all elevating at the same time. And that's not bringing everyone to the middle. That is elevating everyone to get to grade-level standards. You know, we have success metrics in place as a board that say, you know, we need to push this, we need to show year-over-year improvement. And what I think that looks like, it's, you know, it's hard to do, because kids come to us in so many different ways, so many different ways of learning and readiness for school. So that's a challenge for teachers to meet, and that comes through differentiated teaching. So you have to have an approach that matches, you know, if you have a kid that's a little bit behind, we still have to get him to the finish line. Like, if he comes in and he's still at a second grade level and third grade, he still needs to get to a third grade level. So how do you bring that kid along? At the same time, how do you have the kid who, you know, is in third grade, but maybe he's already ready for fourth grade, but let's not slow him down either? So that is differentiated teaching, and that's hard for teachers to do. It's, takes a lot of support and a lot of training and a lot of skill, but it's one of the toughest things we face. So how do we differentiate? How do we use scaffolds to support kids, to, you know, the whole, like, you know, I do, we do, you do, to support them, to show that they know? Because I think that's the number one thing. If I come out of our school board and we've closed my term here, if we've closed some gaps down the line, I will, I will be proud of that forever, because I think it's one of the biggest things facing us as a district, the state of Minnesota, and I would assume the country as well. Thanks.
Thank you. And Daniel Turner.
I, I agree with Annie that it's very important to support our teachers, and I also selected test scores to discuss. As a scientist, I feel like this is something I can, I can get my hands on, and I've done so over the last few months. I've had countless emails and telephone conversations with the Minnesota Department of Education to learn more about test scores, as well as reviewed some of the different assessment tools going on in our district. And I want to just clear up a few sources of common confusion as I've gone through the community and talked to people. The MCA scores matter. They're almost perfectly correlated to ACT results, and they're also predictive of first-year college readiness. This was studied by the Minnesota Department of Education a number of times, and it's always come out as a correlation coefficient of positive 0.8, which is almost perfect. In addition, the op-outs are not counted as zero. When you see a common news story about percent proficiency, they are turned into zeros for a federal report, as well as one particular state report called North Star. I think the reason I'm using these two minutes to talk about test scores is that's the primary purpose of our public schools, which is to educate our students. And for example, in terms of reading, it's known in the literature that 95% of humans generally are capable of reading fluently, and I feel like that should be our objective target as, as a district. We should aim to achieve what is realistic. I think our district is doing an excellent job of monitoring these things, and we need to evaluate other methods that other districts are using and seeing success with.
Thank you very much. So we're ready to go on to the next question, and with us, we'll start with Michael Overman. The most important role of the school board is governance and oversight of administration. Such oversight can be hindered by pre-existing relationships. How will you separate your potential business and personal relationships with district administrators from board duties?
Well, that's a great question. You're right, the role of the board is governance. The board hires one super, you know, one employee, supervises one employee. Ours is Dr. Renee Cornet at this time. I have no professional business with her, that, so that is easy to clear up. So, but if I did, there's ways to disclose that. You know, Renee has to file a report every year, kind of talking about the businesses she's in, so we're clear on, that her husband's in. So we have some understanding of kind of what that orbit is around her and make sure that we're all aware of it. As far as personal relationships or things like that, you know, I'm on the board to serve our kids and our students and our school. You know, I'm, I'm a professional. I have managed friends of mine, I'm friends with people at my work. So, you know, I know how to separate personal from objective and business. You know, it's not easy, it's not fun, especially if a tough conversation, but I can tell you, I have had difficult conversations with Superintendent Cornet. You know, I've given her direct feedback, I've given her feedback in public and also in private, and we've had very, you know, honest back and forth about that. And I think the whole thing is having a level of trust and respect, and if you also, you know, like each other because you have kids who are similar ages, and maybe you've hung out watching them play sports, you can like someone and still be objective about how you manage them. So I think it's all about kind of a commitment on what your goal is and kind of what your North Star is, and you kind of set the rest aside and say, okay, what do we need to do to get our goals done? You know, if, if you're not doing the job properly, let's talk about what that means and how we're going to get that done. Thanks.
Thank you. Daniel Turner.
Sure. We moved here just a few years ago. I don't really have any relationship with the current superintendent and wouldn't anticipate that going forward as well. What I can say is that at the university level, relationships between supervisors and supervisees are tightly controlled. Upfront transparency is required and encouraged, so that the review process is unbiased. For example, in, in a department that I was in, one faculty member can no longer be reviewed by the, by the departmental chair due to an existing relationship, and his review was conducted in an outside department. Somewhere, there's a line between being friendly and collegial and allowing personal ties to influence our judgment. It's difficult to see our own biases in terms of the board superintendent level. I think if, if one were to have a close relationship with the superintendent, I think, I think actually that could be helpful in many ways, except when it comes time to maybe have a vote on the review process, or as well as on contract renewals, probably the appropriate thing that I would imagine is to abstain from those votes. Thank you.
Thank you. And Annie Bosmans.
Yeah, I think, you know, recently I read Talking to Strangers by Malcolm Gladwell, And he tells multiple stories of times when people have trusted. The more time they spend with somebody, the more that they trust them, which generally we would agree. And there's this bias towards trust. The stories that he told were when people were duped to doing things, like this head CIA, that was like the biggest double agent. And so his point was there, we sometimes biased towards trust when, because we think we know them. And sometimes our relationships don't always prove correct. And so there has to be, and then there's also the other point of as a leader, and when you're balancing somebody that you're in charge of, you have to find that balance of collaborative leadership. And how do we work together to make things happen? And also balancing that, I have to be mindful of my bias, so that I'm making the right choices for what's best for everybody. So really trying to take both things in mind and knowing that sometimes we can think the best of people even when we shouldn't. And so, and you want to lean to trust. So how do we navigate that? And I think it takes some intentionality and hearing other voices outside of just the one right in front of you. So finding all the difference, hearing all the different voices and perspectives, so that you have a full, broad spectrum of what you're looking at.
Thank you. So the next question, we will start with Daniel Turner. How do you see the school district partnering with local businesses, the Chamber of Commerce, and community organizations to provide internships, career exploration, or real-world learning opportunities?
Can you repeat the first part of that question?
How do you see the school district partnering with local businesses, the Chamber of Commerce, and community organizations to provide internships, career exploration, or real-world learning opportunities?
Yeah, I think this is a great idea, whoever asked this question. It's pretty common, in my experience, to see partnerships such as those. In my own school, growing up, we had some manufacturing companies in our town. And they partnered with the school students in a number of different ways, including providing interesting technology machines, I guess, at the time. So here in our local community, we don't have so many manufacturing companies. I don't, my mind is going completely blank, actually, right now, in terms of what companies are in the community, to even create an example right here on the spot. But I think overall, this is a great idea. There should be internships. I think this is manageable, work-study type programs. Yeah, I'll leave it there. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Annie Bosmans.
I love this. This is like, this is all of who I am. Such a foundational part of who I am. When I was home part-time with my kids, childcare shared. I believe that we, I shared childcare with a friend, so we could both work part-time. And I think there's such value in the village, I know that we live in the village, but the village of, like, we all, we need each other to support one another. And the perspectives that I have in my family is so different from another perspective. And so how can we, as a community with various businesses and all kinds of different ways, support our children to understand the breadth of options out there? And I think it would be beautiful. I don't really know currently what's happening in those spaces, but I think it would be amazing to have some sort of system where we are offering them opportunities to find places to understand, you know, what is it like to be in, like, work in the restaurant industry? What is it like to help with housing, or have rental properties, or just any varied number of ways that they could do within our little space here? And how can we learn from one another and really grow and be that community that I think is so lovely about this space that we have here?
Thank you. And Michael Overman.
Yes, I agree. This is also a fantastic question. So whichever of you submitted it, a number of people maybe for the theme, thank you very much. And it's actually a great time to ask it in our community, because Cody Holiday is in here, and the Chamber of Commerce has been kind of reinvigorated over the last few years. So it's really healthy and very strong right now. And Jason Johnson is a business teacher over at our high school, who, this was more of a second career for him. And he is really just, he has jumped in with so much enthusiasm. I don't know if you guys have seen the merchandise that he sells through his students, that they design, manufacture, and sell. We put it up for sale at the Village Fest booth. And I think we did like $800 a business. That all is going back into the school and right back into that program. So we've got two really energetic people that could help lead the charge on this. I think it's wonderful for kids to be able to pursue their interests at an early age and find out, you know, is it right for me? Do I like bussing tables? Do I like working in a restaurant? Or is it terrible to interact with the public? But I also think that's a really important thing to know. You want, I think every person should have to work as a waiter or server at some point. You know, it should just be part of graduating. But, so they can explore things they're interested and passionate about. And that's how you learn, is, you know, you can study and talk all you want in a classroom. But when you get in and you see what a business is like, you know, you kind of get a real feel, like, is this something I want to be doing? Where does this lead to? You get a feel for like, what it's like to do low-level work, which is important, because, you know, you come out of college with hopes and dreams, and sometimes it's kind of boring at first. But if you have that lesson upfront, oh, this is what it is, and this is what it can be, because you have someone kind of mentoring you and paying attention. I think that's a great thing to learn at this age. And I'm really excited that, you know, we've got a great setup for it. So, and I hope that's getting explored more. I know we've talked about it as part of the school. So I'm looking forward to see how that plays out.
Thank you. So we received a lot of this question, and it's, it was kind of put together into one rather complicated question. And it's one of those yes, no, tree things. Okay, so, and with this question, we're going to start with Michael Overman. So there are candidates for the school board who are currently part of a parent group in our community known as the St. Anthony New Brighton Parent Coalition for Teachers and Students. So the question is, are you a member of this parent coalition? And what is your role if you are? And if you're not part of this coalition, why not? Or why didn't you? Or wouldn't you? And if elected, would you maintain your position with this coalition? And if yes, how do you see that as a potential conflict of interest? So did you get that? Are you a part of this coalition or not? And why, either way? And if you are, if you're elected, does that, how are you going to deal with your basically potential conflict of interest?
Do you get time for them?
I don't know. No, you know, some of the questions were like a little page long. This is the shorter version. So you got the gist. And I wasn't familiar with this organization, so I don't know.
What was the end? If elected?
If you are part of this coalition and you are elected, would you stay in that, in the coalition? Or would you leave it? Or how would you deal with it as a potential conflict of interest, relative to your role on the school board in governance? So it's kind of complicated. So, and you only have two minutes to answer, so there you go. So, Michael Overman.
Great. Thank you very much. Well, to answer step one of this choose-your-own-adventure question, no, I am not a member of the CMB Coalition. So I guess I get to take a slightly different route on this. You know, that is a group that was formed last spring. It's a community group that was upset about some things that happened in our district. And it's completely fair that they're upset. They have a right to be, because their kids were involved. You know, it's concerned citizens, and they have questions. And they've wanted to, you know, get answers and advocate for transparency. And I think there are some, you know, great points that have come out of that group and great questions, and some work has been done. But also, you know, it is a group that sometimes has been a little aggressive with data requests, we feel like, as a school board member. And they have, you know, but data requests are part of transparency, so that's fine. So no, I'm not a member. If I was a member, I would resign from it. I was on the CMB Foundation, which raises money for grants for schools. I was the treasurer. You know, it felt a little weird being the treasurer of that group and the treasurer, I was going to be potentially the treasurer of the school board. So I went ahead and stepped down as the CMB, from the CMB Foundation's treasurer, because I just didn't want to have any perception of any sort of bias at all. Coincidentally, PJ Stryker took over for me. So we've been kind of following a similar path. But, you know, I think it's important to appear neutral. And, you know, just, especially when you're doing public work and publicly elected work, that, you know, you have a nice, clean path to work in, because you don't want to have a conflict of interest. You don't want to even have that kind of in the back of your mind, even though, you know, you know you're doing the right thing. But, you know, as Annie said, you know, when you're around people, sometimes you might develop a bias. So I think it's important to, you know, separate ourselves and, you know, go it alone.
Thank you. Daniel Turner.
Yeah, thanks. So I'm not a member of the Coalition leadership. I do receive the Coalition emails. Over the past couple of months, I've had two meetings with people on the Coalition leadership team, and about two or three phone conversations and associated text threads to organize those events. I'm not sure if that makes me a member of the Coalition or not, to be honest. The Coalition has endorsed me because we have some common interests, a strong support for teachers and students in our district, and an emphasis on transparency in decision-making. And I am grateful for their endorsement and support. More broadly, I'm impressed with any grassroots political organization. And I see tremendous value in community members coming together for a common cause. It's truly impressive. And even more broadly, I think it's important for school board members to engage and chat with people in our district. I don't think it's a bad thing that school board members would meet with any particular community group or individual person. Of course, there's straightforward constraints of the open meeting law. But other than that, I think it's good. So it's important to be mindful of bias, for sure. I don't think I have a conflict of interest in this case. But I do appreciate the endorsement of the Coalition. Thank you.
And Annie Bosmans.
Well, I am on the leadership team of the Coalition. So I feel like this question was maybe directed towards me, which is fine. I entered into it, into the group, not because, or it was formed, yes, because of one event for many children, but not my children. When I first heard that a teacher left in April or February, and it was a Friday, and the kids came back on Monday, and she was gone, I knew right away that there was something wrong. And I got my red flags up, and I was like, what's happened? That teacher did not feel safe, and she did not see a path forward. And so I got curious, and I asked a lot of questions. And all of these other parents were also asking a lot of questions. And, you know, the more questions that we asked, and the answers often were not enough, and it didn't feel like it created a, it created enough understanding to be like, okay. It created more questions, actually. So I am in it. I've really thought a lot about what that looks like when I'm on the board. And I don't think that there's anything wrong with parents asking questions. I also will be completely vocal about, I want to talk to people. I want to hear every voice that I'm not hearing. And if I'm wrong, or if I say something that you don't agree with, please come talk to me. Let's have a conversation. Let's talk through it. But I don't anticipate changing my plans. I anticipate probably taking a bit more of an observational space as I'm in that, rather than being quite so fully into it. But I think they are providing voices for people that have not felt heard for a long time. And so I think that's really beautiful. And like Daniel said, grassroots, that there's nothing wrong with the democratic way. And I'm really proud to be a part of it. And I've learned a lot. And we've really made some good progress.
Thank you very much. So we're ready for the next question. And for this question, we will start with Annie Bosmans. Change of topic. Considering the current political climate in the country, where do you stand on diversity, equity, and inclusion programs, and why? And similarly, what are your views on ICE entering school grounds or buildings?
Yeah, that's a good question. I have done as much work as I can within my capacity to try and understand equity. And I came from a space where it wasn't, it wasn't diverse. And so I'm learning a lot. And I think that every child deserves to be in a space that they feel safe, and that they feel that they belong. And so what does that need to look like? That needs to look like our curriculum is aligned with equity. And it looks like teachers that have done training to understand their own biases, so that they are, they are able to best create spaces for our children. And it looks like trying to make our staff look how our students look, and make that proportionate. And I think it's valuable, and it's important, and it's necessary, and it's hard work. So I am fully aligned, and I will always be learning more, and I always want to do better. And with that, with ICE, I think that, and I know that I've read through, I think our policies, to keep children safe here, this is a safe space for them. And so doing whatever we can to make sure that our children are not, are not met with ICE agents in our schools. I think that's highly important. And we'll do what I need to, to help make sure that happens where we can.
Thank you. And next, Michael Overman.
Sure. I'll start with just the ICE part. Kids need to feel safe at school, period. ICE shouldn't be in school buildings. Kids need to feel like that is an okay place. I think that any child who feels threatened by the concept of ICE in general is probably a little bit on edge. And school should be a safe zone for them to feel comfortable, for them to be able to even learn. You have to feel safe in the room. So I'll just, that's my take. You know, we'll see what the federal government does. But if, as far as you want to know, if I get a vote in it, that's how I'm voting. As far as DEI initiatives, you know, I kind of talked earlier in one of these questions about foundational change. And, you know, I view equity as, let's make sure every kid gets a chance to get where they need to go. And that is meeting them where they're at. And kids arrive at all different phases. So we want to make sure we support them to get to their grade level, to learn what they need to learn, so they can graduate, so they can be successful, you know, whatever they want to do. If they want to go into, you know, the career path right away, or they go to college, let's make sure every kid has that chance. I do think kids do better when they can see someone who looks like them in a leadership position. That is something that I value. And I think we have a diverse student population. A quick aside, one of the best nights of the year of being on the school board is graduation. And you see the senior class coming in. And it is really amazing to see just, you know, how diverse a community we have. Because it doesn't always line up with the neighborhoods we live in. But it's amazing, you hear their families cheering from the side. So to make sure that those kids get to see people in leadership roles, so they see what they can aspire to be, I think is important. And however, we can support that through different methods of education, even if it's just posters up on the wall as a low bar, to say, oh, look, there's someone like me who is successful. I can feel inspired by that. Thanks.
Thank you. And Daniel Turner.
Thanks. I'll also take the ICE question off the top. It's very important that our schools feel safe for all students. And I could talk for a long time about my own experiences. I serve on my church's, it's called a risk assessment team, which is a safety team. I chair that. And we've worked with our attorneys to create good documentation and posters in our church for private spaces, which should, from what I've been told legally, prevent ICE from proceeding further. So I don't know if the district has considered that, or if the attorneys in the district have considered that as well. In terms of equity, I would say, in the current zeitgeist, this is an important topic, and yet it remains fairly divisive. In terms of policy decisions by the board, we may come up with choices to make that would put our federal funding at risk, and that's somewhat worrisome. And it puts the board in a difficult spot, so that we can effectively serve all of our students. I've participated in education at the highest levels in the world, and I've seen how people of every origin and background and shape and size can succeed academically if given a chance. Also, in terms of equity, I've seen that this word is tossed about often. in terms of equity, I've seen that this word is tossed about often without definition and it means different things to different people. But if the term means something like giving students what they need to succeed and recognizing that some students need additional support to get there, this seems completely unobjectionable and I can't imagine anyone disagreeing with that. We should maintain our high academic standards and give everyone what they need to bring them up there. Um, and we also need to ensure that our brightest students remain challenged yet at the same time. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. So with the next question, we will start with Daniel Turner. There's such a thing as economy of scale. So has the St. Anthony, uh, New Brighton School District ever considered merging with a larger neighboring school district because of that economy of scale? And if, and would you support it or not?
Interesting. It sounds like this is more of a question for Google. Um, so has St. Anthony? Yes. So from what my limited knowledge is sometime in the 1990s, this was considered and it was turned down. Um, and I agree with that. I think small school districts, we are small, like geographically, but in terms of student body, we are not all that different from many other school districts in the state. Um, and so, so I think, uh, whoever asked the question may wish to clarify if they meant which of those meanings they were most concerned about. But I feel like the small geographically is actually a bonus because we have awesome groups like the bike bus who can like bring a huge number of our students to Wilshire Park. So there's advantages to being small if, in terms of geography. Um, there is certainly an economy of scale and I think we do participate in that, like with the intermediate school district nine one six that allows us to sort of, um, loop in with, what, a 10 or 12 other districts there, um, for, uh, special education purposes. Uh, I forget the last half of the question, but something about should we stay as our size? And yes, I would support that.
Thank you. Uh, Annie Bosmans.
Yeah, um, it, I believe it was the 90s. Um, and I've talked to some people who were a part of keeping the district intact in the 90s. Um, and so as part of some of our work of just kind of getting to know the community and asking questions, um, they fought for us then. And I think it's worthwhile to fight for us now. We are, I've said, you know, a, a small but mighty community. And I think there is so much potential in this sweet little space that we have where our kids can ride their bikes to any of their friends' houses. Um, and, uh, we have opportunities to, to collaborate with other districts. It's not perfect, right? Um, there's, there's, there's things that are hard when you are in a small district in comparison to some of the bigger thing, bigger schools that can, that have opportunities. Um, but there is something magical about here and I think it's worth fighting for. That's why we're all here. Um, and so, yeah, if, if that came to, to a head at one point and we had to discuss that, I think, I mean, there's probably a lot of things to weigh, but I think it would be worth fighting for and I would be happy to, to keep us there.
Thank you. And Michael Overman.
Sure. It's a kind of a shame Barry Kinsey's not here. He can tell the story the best. Um, so he's still serving his interim board chair right now. So if anyone wants the full story of how we almost lost our district, uh, call Barry. He'd be happy to regale you if you buy him a Diet Coke and a slice of pie. Um, yeah, it'd be easier if we were bigger sometimes. Uh, there's resources available at bigger schools. There's, you know, sometimes there's more student support. There's a better office. There's, you know, we have to outsource our communications to CISO because, you know, it's a more affordable option for us to do that. And thankfully, there's resources like that. Uh, there is nine 16 that can handle, uh, a lot of things that we're not able to take on and we're grateful for that relationship. Uh, Laura Oxenbaugh's done a wonderful job over the years being liaison to them. And it's really, uh, a truly great resource that we have so we don't have to carry that on our own because we couldn't afford to do it. Um, I think this place is great. Um, we complain about the taxes a lot, you know? That's just part of the fun of talking about St. Anthony is how high our tax bill is, right? Um, but part of that is we don't, we didn't, we don't have businesses to tax. That's part of the issue. The residents carry the burden. And we've fought at the legislative level at the state to say, hey, this isn't fair to our residents. Um, we don't like to carry this, put this much load on them. You know, we don't like to keep going back and doing a song and dance to say, hey, plaster our levees so we can keep our school going because we're carrying more weight. But also, my daughter can walk home from a football game and she doesn't walk past a closed down business shopping mall that, you know, that's unguarded and maybe unsafe. She gets to walk through residential neighborhoods, which is really something that I try to always remember every time, you know, I get my tax bill. It's like, I am paying for that. We have fast fire response. It's one of the fastest, like, it's insane, like two and a half minutes how fast they get to you. And I'm, I'm off topic from the school a little bit, but I'm just talking about St. Anthony as a whole. Small and mighty is wonderful. And yes, I, I would fight like hell to keep this independent if it came to it.
Thank you. Uh, we'll have the next question start with Michael Overman. Uh, how would you improve communication and engagement between the district, families, and the wider St. Anthony New Brighton community?
How would I improve it?
Improve communication and engagement.
Sure. Um, well, we actually talked about this at a recent board development meeting. Um, like I said, we don't have a communications department of our own, so we've been relying on CISO to help us bolster that. Um, because a lot of times it's just been the school secretaries doing their best to get emails out and organized. And that's hard for them to do. That's not their background or their training. So the board, you know, gave administration, talked to administration. They said, we should outsource this to professionals. And I hope things have gotten better. I know it's not perfect. I know you don't get all the information you need all the time, but there has been a plan to make it better and have more straightforward communication and more regular path from the district. Uh, the board looked at a comprehensive communication plan, um, like I said, on the nine, September 30th meeting, uh, that will, you know, we have listening sessions, the first meeting of each month, which is 20 minutes. You kind of talk to the board. Sometimes it's awkward and weird because we don't talk back. We just listen and nod and we take notes. But that's what it's set up to be. It's not set up to be a back and forth. So we have that. We're looking to add, uh, some smaller group sessions where it's two or three board members. Cause that way we can avoid open meetings and it's a little more casual and comfortable. So someone can talk and come with more specific questions. We're going to look, where can set those up? Like, is it going to be at the library? Are we going to go into some of these apartment buildings from underrepresented communities that we haven't heard from as much? Can we go to them and get more information? And then, you know, we will do kind of more of like a bigger town hall setting like we did, uh, this last spring, which wasn't what everyone wanted, but it was a, a first step finally for us. Um, and that's also a place where some other people might feel more comfortable in a larger setting because some people don't like small group conversation. It's, you know, sometimes it's weird to sit with six people in a room and talk about things. Um, they want something a little more, uh, you know, a little less personal, a little more anonymous. So, uh, we are looking at plans as a board to roll this out. Um, and it's nice to see it actually take shape and see it on a piece of paper and laid out. And we know that we need to do better and we have a plan to actually do better.
Thank you. Daniel Turner.
Right. So when, when I hear this question, my mind lights up with a whole tree. Uh, because communication and engagement is a, a two-way street. It goes both ways between the district as well, to the parents, as well as from the parents and community members to the district. Uh, and it also, uh, is two additional parts. One is the channels of communication and the second part is the content of those communications. So that's a lot of little boxes to check. Um, I do feel like the district communicates really well. In fact, sometimes it's overwhelming. I'll get a, a notice on parent square. I'll get an email and a text all on the same topic. So, um, I've, I feel like the, in, in fact, it happened today, right? With the incident at Wilshire Park, uh, I got all three of those. So I feel like the, the school is very responsive when it comes to like safety events and, and so forth, which is good to see. Um, another advantage of being a small district is that we're able to easily communicate with members of the board, uh, or school leadership. Uh, I've sent a number of emails over the past few years and have received a response pretty quickly. Sometimes nothing happens as a result of that response, but at least I will receive a response. Uh, I do feel like these channels of communication are quite good. I think the content of the communication could be improved. Uh, I've knocked on a lot of doors this fall and there's a lot of mystery about, uh, the, the district budget and finances. I feel like people are confused about a number of things. And so that indicates that the onus is on the district to better communicate those details. Uh, just as one example of several that I could go into. Thank you.
Thank you. And Annie Bosmans.
Yeah, I, I was at the meeting when they had talked about, uh, the communication plan and I really like a lot of their community engagement ideas. Um, a couple additional things. I think that, you know, yes, we do a lot of really good outward, like outgoing communications. What I would love to see is more engagement from our community and how do we, um, bring everybody into the fold? How are, do we hear the voices of people that we haven't heard? Um, and so I think a lot of that comes from the underlying idea of feeling ownership. Um, how do we, and that's, I think, bigger conversation that we can have, but how do we help families, maybe families that live out of the district, maybe families that aren't coming to things, maybe that have language barriers? How do we make them feel ownership of the space and get them to want to be a part of it too? And how do we help them find the space that they can be helpful in? Um, and so sometimes that takes a little bit of work and maneuvering to find the right places for them, but everybody can have a, a place. And so how can we be mindful of bringing everybody into the fold? Um, I would love to have, like, as a, a board member, I would love to have office hours. I've talked about, you know, how to like, you know, again, speaking to bringing people into the fold, like maybe it's every other month, I go and sit at one of the apartment complexes or at Caribou or Starbucks where everybody is or that people have access to and I'm just there. And sometimes I'm working on my work and sometimes I'm there talking with people and it's just a space to be that people know that I'm there. Um, you know, being able to schedule something online and just book it on my calendar and just being accessible, I think is really important for people to feel heard. Um, I think ultimately, even if you can't give them what they want, um, because it doesn't make sense for the whole thing, if they're heard, I think people can generally be, um, more content. And so how do we give a voice to people and find, help them find their way here in this space?
Thank you. So with the next question, we will start with Michael Overman. And so we are, I'm going to take a question from the audience. So please tell us about your experience with laws governing student and staff data privacy and a time when you had to maintain confidentiality, confidentiality on a controversial topic.
Sorry, could you repeat that one more time?
Absolutely. Please tell us about your experience with the laws governing student and staff data privacy and a time when you had to maintain confidentiality on a controversial topic.
Sure. That's, um, one of the challenges of being, uh, in a school board role. Um, we, fortunately, the district, uh, the school board has an attorney to help guide us with this, um, because we will proceed with the utmost caution first. Um, we're not going to give out any specific personnel, employment data, student, uh, individual student information. We try to be as careful as we can, uh, about, uh, you know, saying any sort of name in public where, you know, so you're trained part as, that's part of the training is being on the school board is just learning that, you know, err on the side of caution and try to protect everyone, uh, first. And then you can think about what's the, what's okay. You can talk to your, your attorney. And that's one of the few times that we are allowed to have a closed session is if we have to talk about something specific, um, it's a closed session to protect the privacy of those involved. Um, there's pretty strict rules about closed session, but that's one of them because you're trying to protect people and it's sensitive information. Um, so I'm not an expert in it. I've got some experience from my four years on the school board and we have an attorney that helps guide us who is an expert on it. And we go to him first, uh, with any sort of doubts or questions. Um, and there have been a number of times where it would be easy to say, yeah, you know, it's unfortunate something played out this way. I wish I could, you know, and I wish I could tell you more, but I agree it's unfortunate and it's too bad. And that's going to have to, how I have to end the conversation because, you know, I'm not allowed to share, you know, any insider information, anything that I might have, um, heard because of my position on the school board. Um, you know, I can't have a conversation saying like, well, you know, if I could really tell you what went on, you know, that might be easier. That might, you know, I might be able to explain things a little bit better, but it's not something I'm allowed to do. So it's something I, and I take it really seriously to protect the district and protect those who are involved in sensitive situations.
Thank you. Annie Bosmans.
Yeah. Um, so I have not, I have not been on the board. I have not been in a, a situation where I would need to, um, handle these things. However, um, I am generally a person that will wait and watch before I would do something. And so it would be, what do I need to know? And how do I, um, do the right thing? And I don't say anything until you know what you can and cannot. And so finding the right people that are experts in those things and can, you know, speaking with the attorney or leaning on other, um, other board members to just manage what we're supposed to do. And so you figure out those things when, when you need to.
Thank you. And Daniel Turner.
As a professor, I have gained much more experience with the laws governing student data privacy than I'd ever wanted to imagine. Uh, FERPA, HIPAA, you just go down the list. Uh, one of the most difficult conversations I've ever had on the phone was a parent who was wondering about their own student and the situation was very difficult and awkward and I couldn't tell them. And that was terrible. I've ridden in ambulances with students who needed to go to the hospital so I could help. Um, they had nobody else. Uh, and so I've been in these situations before and handled them. Now it's kind of rushing back to me. I'm sorry. Uh, but yes, uh, it's, it's super important to maintain confidentiality. Um, and like the others have said, it's very important to respect, uh, what the laws are even when it makes us uncomfortable. Uh, I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Thank you. So we are now ready to go on to the next question. And for this, we'll start with Annie Bosmans. So artificial intelligence or AI is here. And so what is your feeling about that's used by teachers and students and how is the district developing a policy on its use?
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question. And, um, of course it's in conversations everywhere. Um, I'm in, in my own, in my own self, I'm trying to figure out what am I willing to, to use this for and what am I not? And I try that and I don't like that. That doesn't feel good to me. Um, and so I think there's an, there's a, you have to find a balance of, um, you know, the same with internet and like social media, like they're helping our children, our students learn in a space that is safe and, um, so that they can play with it a little bit while also understanding the, the vast potential of what it could bring, both good and bad. And so I think it is finding that balance. And I think that's, it's going to take some time for, for leaders to make those decisions on what makes sense. Um, I think we need to be very cautious, um, because, you know, I, I don't know if you guys have seen the pictures of how your brain looks when people using AI versus not using AI. And that's really scary to me, um, that we're maybe losing some of our creativity and our ability to critically think because somebody else is doing it for us or something else. Um, so I want to be very cautious and mindful and know that it's also a really great tool. And so how can we, how can we parse that out and figure out what's best for, for our students, um, in this ever-changing, ever-evolving landscape of AI?
Thank you. Uh, Daniel Turner.
Great. So I have some experience with AI. I've written neural nets to, with my graduate students for doing things in our, in our lab. Um, and I've published research papers in this area. Uh, personally, I'm not too impressed with the AI tools that exist. Uh, ChatGPT can't do basic math. Um, I was happy to see that Google, Google AI. I think that's the one that had the cheat button that they removed. So that was good to see. Um, in the academic setting, it's still fairly easy to tell who's been using AI. It sticks out like a sore thumb versus original thoughts. Um, I think in terms of the school district, uh, we do have some choices to make in terms of policy, right? One of the three key areas of school board is setting policy. And so we need to get ahead of this, um, and figure out where it's appropriate to use in academic setting. Um, and also, it, this maybe is not directly in the area of the school board, but I think it should inform our students in terms of their future career choices, um, because it, it will have a transformative effect in many careers, um, or jobs, um, as our students, um, uh, advance beyond, uh, once. advance beyond, once, once they graduate. I could say more, but I guess I'll leave it there.
Thank you, and Michael Overman.
Sure, AI, how do you, how do you write policy on something that is spreading like wildfire and evolving, I mean, every second of every day? You know, yes, it's got flaws, but it keeps getting better, you know, all the time. So you have to think broadly about that because you, specific policy is going to be obsolete by the time you've got it through three readings and a commit, you know, passing it. So you prioritize safety, number one, because our kids are going to use it. And we want to make sure that it's introduced in an age-appropriate manner. So, you know, and you want that to come from, you know, you want our kids to learn about these things through trusted resources. You don't want to hide it from them. You want your parents, you want the schoolteachers that you know and trust to introduce this and do it in a way that fits, you know? Look, a fifth grader getting introduced to AI will be different than, you know, a junior in high school getting introduced to AI. So let's make sure the policy first, you know, that it's safe and age-appropriate. And then we want to have some, just some basic safeguards in place with whatever vendor we select, you know? It's, you know, do you, some questions to answer, like, do you train on our data? What are you doing with our data? Do you have logs so we can see what rabbit hole this kid went down? That now, you know, might need some extra support. So we need to know that we can see what they've been doing and we need to think broadly and broadly and specifically about what safeguards need to be in place. I'm no expert on it, but I think, you know, when we're talking about setting policy, we want to bring experts in to say like, how do we make this safe and how do we make sure it's okay? And then there's a whole thing, you know, I worry about the loss of thinking as well. Because, you know, and does, what does that mean for assessment? Are we going back to blue book tests, you know? Are we going to sit down and have to write everything out? And maybe that's the right answer, I don't know for testing because, you know, think, you know, writing is thinking, putting your thoughts together and putting it in one place, that is thinking. And that is something that, yes, like these two have said, I worry about the loss of thinking for all of us.
Thank you. So the next question, we will start with Michael Overman. So based on all of the questions, I would say this is a very timely one. Trust is essential for a healthy school community. What does rebuilding trust look like to you? And how would you go about fostering it among the students, the staff, the families and the community? And again, we're starting with Michael Overman.
Thank you. So last fall, we tried rolling out a version of effective instruction and it stumbled out of the gates. And the teachers showed up at a board meeting and said that they felt like they were being blamed for the way it rolled out. And I looked at the situation and I looked at, you know, the, the write-ups I'd seen and, you know, I said, I think in this case, you know, it feels like a leadership issue and that we're not all on the same page here. And I said, we have three Rs in this district, it's rigor, relevance and relationships. And right now we need to flip those. And it needs to be relationships, then talking about the relevance of what we're trying to do and then cranking up the rigor. So that was something I said a year ago that we need to rebuild trust and we need to be working together, you know? And so what does that look like? It's adults in the room figuring out how we're going to tackle a problem. Last year, talking with the head of the teachers' union, Beth Riefus, you know, we both had agreed on a point that we don't need to hit a panic button yet because we have the same destination. We want all our kids to do well. You know, we're all going to the same place. I just think we're in different cars sometimes. You know, we are caravanning when we should be carpooling. So something I told administration is, you know, you need to go figure this out. We need to get together. And so administration and the teachers' union got together to kind of work through, is talking specifically about effective instruction and what, what the teachers could find acceptable. And they, you know, kind of hashed that out through the school year. And, you know, I've said like, we can't do this unless we're all on board together. But we also have an urgency because, you know, our test scores are showing that we aren't getting kids to where they need to be. When we look at kind of how we're assessing our system, you know, it's not meeting the levels that we need it to. So the only way we get to do it is together and that's by talking to one another. And there's going to be some tiny leaps of faith in there, but we have to do it and because we have no choice, we can't fail the kids.
Thank you, Daniel Turner.
So as I've chatted with a lot of people over the past few months, I've definitely detected that there is sort of an aura of distrust among the community members broadly, as well as teachers for a number of reasons, effective instruction and test scores and spending decisions and staff departures. And, and if you think about it, the, the real antidote to distrust is, is transparency. And, and sometimes this takes radical transparency. And so what does that look like? Sometimes it's, it's beneficial to evaluate what, what something looks like by looking at the opposite, which would be intentional obfuscation. And I don't think that's happening here, but certain members of the community have told me they feel like obfuscation has been intentional. And that suggests both a change in style and method. And, you know, in terms of financial transparency, like, I'm shocked by the number of people who've brought this up to me in different conversations, worried about how our levies are being spent and if they're being spent appropriately. People are wondering about effective instruction coaches and how much this is all costing. And how much are we paying for different curriculums and things like this? And I think to the maximum extent possible, transparency is the only real antidote when there is overall general distrust.
Thank you, and Annie Bosmans.
Yeah, radical transparency, I think, is a really relevant term. I think that when we have a union survey, teacher union survey, that says 82% of teachers have low trust in our administration, that's a really big problem. And so that requires some radical transparency. I also think another large part of that is having an acknowledgement of missteps and, and holding accountability and of our missteps and consistently showing how we're going to make amends. If we're not, if we're not owning our mistakes, we can't truly bridge that gap to how do we get on the same side of the table and look at a problem? If we don't trust that you're actually going to take accountability for what you're doing. So I think accountability is a really important part. And I think it's transparently working through problems together and having those hard conversations, taking accountability where it's due. And then also showing over and over again that you're going to be there and you're going to support your, your people. And in this specific case, supporting our, our teachers and our families and our students over and over again until that trust has been built up over time.
Thank you very much. So because of the time, I'm going to ask one last question, but we don't need to time it because you can only use three words or maybe three short sentences. I love the look on their face, right? Okay, so because I just want to get this in. Okay, so the board has one person with, for whom they're responsible, that's the superintendent. They hire the superintendent, they fire the superintendent, they evaluate the superintendent. So in three words, what do you think are the most critical attributes for a superintendent? And with this question, I didn't give you a warning, but for this question, we'll start with Daniel Turner. Maybe we need to time it.
It's untimed, right?
Time, 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 they have one minute max.
Yeah, they want me to. I think what we should look for, I'm going to cheat. I think we want a superintendent who is student-centered, teacher-centered and community-centered.
Thank you.
That was so good. Okay, I need a second.
Are you timing?
Gave him the question off.
Okay, I've got to collaborative, supportive and high achieving, I don't know, that's kind of a guess, I need more time, but I'll, I'll give.
It's a tough one.
It's a tough one, three words.
I admit it. Michael Overman.
It's not fair, I got to listen to these two, so, three words. Competent, trustworthy, caring.
Thank you, thank you for doing our short blitz. So we're now ready for our closing statements and you guys are going, thank you. So we're, we're going to do them in kind of reverse order, then the opening statements. And again, I'm going to be reading the closing statements for the candidates who are not here. So I will be reading the closing statement for PJ Stryker. I'm running for school board because I believe in St. Anthony and in the incredible potential of every student who walks through our doors. Our schools are the heart of this community and when they thrive, our community thrives. I want to focus on what truly matters, supporting our teachers, strengthening our finances and making sure every child has access to the full range of opportunities that make our school special. That means keeping classrooms well-resourced, ensuring strong extracurriculars like our athletics, arts and band programs and making sure every student can participate, no matter their background or ability to pay. It also means recognizing and supporting every member of our school community, from our bus drivers and paraprofessionals to custodians and food service staff. They're the backbone of our schools and they deserve to feel valued and respected. We know that when students are fed, supported and safely transported to school, they learn better. And when teachers and families feel heard, our schools grow stronger. Lately, it's been clear that our community is struggling to feel connected to the decisions being made. I want to change that. I believe in listening first, bringing people together to have real conversations and find common ground. I'm proud to call St. Anthony home because this is a place where people show up for their kids, their neighbors and their schools. Together, we can build a future where every student feels seen, supported and ready to succeed. I'd be honored to earn your support and vote for school board. Let's move forward together for our teachers, our students and our community. So that's the closing statement from PJ Stryker, who is running for the four-year term. The next closing statement is Laura Haas, who is also running for the seat for the four-year term. Thank you to the moderator, the organizers, everyone running and to all of you who joined tonight to listen and ask questions. While I wish I could have been here in person, I've been working hard to connect with the community in person prior to this forum to hear your concerns, your hopes and your calls for accountability, transparency and partnership. I want you to know, I want you to know I share those objectives. If elected, I will be a school board member who shows up, not just physically, but with empathy, curiosity and a commitment to healing divides. I will not shy away from challenging questions or tough discussions. Instead, I will lean into them with respect, courage and an eye toward collaboration. I care deeply about this community and our schools. This is a responsibility born of love for our children, our educators and every family for whom this district is home. I believe in our potential and I know we can do better together. So tonight I ask for your trust, your feedback and your participation. Hold me to my promise, if I say I'll listen, then push me to listen. If I say I'll act with integrity, then hold me accountable. If I say I'll be your advocate on the board, then engage with me, challenge me and walk beside me. Together, we can transform conflict into creativity, disagreement into direction and passion into progress. I hope to earn your vote and to serve you with care and conviction our children deserve. Thank you. And again, that was the closing statement from Laura Haas for the four-year term. And last but not least is the closing statement from Annie Bosmans.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters, the Chamber of Commerce and to everyone who showed up or tuned in to be a part of this conversation. Your engagement matters deeply because strong public schools depend on strong public participation. I'm running for school board because I believe in the potential of this community and the teachers who show up every day and the families who care deeply and in the students who remind us why this work matters. I also know we are in the midst of a challenging season as a district. Trust has been strained and communication hasn't always felt open or consistent. These realities affect our teachers, our families and most importantly, our students. There is work to be done and that work will take time, care and all of us leaning in together. My commitment is to help create the conditions where honest dialogue and shared understanding can take root, to widen the circle, bring in voices that haven't always been heard and to reach out rather than wait for others to come to us. I believe our perspectives, even our convictions are sharpened, not threatened, when we take the time to understand one another. That's the kind of leadership I believe this moment calls for. I listen first, ask good questions and work to understand the broader picture before making decisions. Because when we understand the why behind the issue, we make wiser, more lasting choices. As a board member, I will work to be a bridge, connecting people, perspectives and possibilities so that together we can create an environment where both students and staff thrive. Our kids, our teachers and our families deserve that level of care and collaboration. That's why I'm running and why I'd be honored to earn your trust and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we will hear from our two candidates running for the two-year term. And the first one is Daniel Turner, your closing statement, please.
Thanks to the audience for being here tonight, the League and the Chamber for hosting. And thanks to my fellow candidates for raising your hand to serve our students and teachers. To quote Teddy Roosevelt in the greatest speech ever given in terms of civics, "It's not the critic who counts, but credit belongs to the man," or now we'd say person, "who's actually in the arena." Serving on the board would be an honor that I would take seriously. I'll be committed to school safety, fiscal responsibility and academic progress and success for our students. I'll continue to listen to the views of parents, students and community members. And if elected, I'll explain decision-making process to the maximum possible extent. Undoubtedly, my former classmates and coworkers wouldn't describe me as the most popular person. In large part, this is because they recognize that my unrelenting pursuit of excellence and truth. And sometimes the truth is deep and it requires discomfort. And occasionally, it requires challenging decision-makers, for example, deans and provosts. If you've read Carol Dweck, this could be called a growth mindset. Ultimately, by working with others through problems and knowledge gaps, we come out in a better place. I appreciate endorsements from the teachers' union and the parent coalition. I'd be honored to receive your vote and hope we can continue these important conversations.
Thank you, and closing statement for the two-year term, Michael Overman.
So I moved here in March of 2014 and by September of that year, I was signed up to decorate our community center here for the Halloween carnival. I was picking up 200 bottles of pop from Cub because we thought that would be a great prize for four-year-olds to earn. A big jug of Cub brand grape soda, oops, sorry. But that just kind of kicked off my involvement. From there, I went to the CMB Foundation, I volunteered at Willshire Park, I've coached, I've been a substitute teacher. I've even sung on stage with the community theater. Since I've gotten here, I've had my sleeves rolled up for this community. And that includes serving in the last four years of school board with integrity. Just because someone's done something before doesn't mean they should get to keep doing it though. But St. Anthony didn't become a great place to live because, you know, people only showed up, you know, when, when things weren't working out the way they wanted to. It takes years to build foundation and that's what I walked into when we moved here is, is decades of work that got us to where we were. And that's what I've tried to do since I've been here, almost coming up on 12 years ago, is just laying foundation. And that's year by year, that's day by day, it's brick by brick. Because kind of like when you have kids and things get hard and things get challenging, you, you hope that the work you've done, the seeds you planted, the bricks you've laid, all the steps you've taken their whole life are going to get them through those hard times. And I think that's what I've tried to do in this community is, is set us up so we're strong enough that we can withhold, withstand hard times and we come out better on the other side. And so I believe for my kids, it's what I believe for this community. And if the community wants to keep me around in the trenches of the school board, I'm here to do it. If you, if you don't, if you vote for Daniel, he's a great guy and I'm going to find something else to do. But I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Chamber for putting this on tonight. Those of you who are here in attendance, those of you who are going to watch at home, thank you very much. Thanks to the candidates, I'm glad to go through this with both of you and appreciate you, yes, getting in the arena. So thank you all.
Thank you. So thank you to the audience here tonight for attending the forum this evening. And I'd like to remind the audience that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. And sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement by the League for any candidate. Obviously, the 50 questions that were sent that I couldn't ask and the ones from the audience that I didn't get to, I apologize. But please ask the candidates directly and I think that's always a good, a good thing to do. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I would also like to acknowledge and thank the candidates, both for participating in the forum and for their willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I would like to thank Nine North for the live filming as well as the videotaping of this forum. Nine North for the live filming as well as the videotaping of this forum. It will be aired on channels 15 and 16, as well as the Nine North webpage at ninenorth.org. So please check the website directly for air times. I would also like to thank the Voter Service Committee of the New Brighton League of Women Voters and the St. Anthony Chamber of Commerce for their work in putting together this candidate forum. And I've done voter service, so I know it's a lot of work. So thank you. So I'd just like to say this as I close, every vote does count. And we've found that out a lot. Every vote does count. So this year, Election Day is Tuesday, November 4. If you're going to vote in person, the polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. You can also vote early. So please check the Secretary of State website to find an early voting location in your area. So thank you and good night.